Listeners, you received your July 10th meeting minutes. Are there any changes, additions, deletions? If not, I'd like to get a motion for approval.
I'll move to approve that submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval of the minutes as they are. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carried. Under old business, there is none. Under new business, item number one is a lot consolidation on land development plan, application for Capitol Heights Phase Three. This is Zone RM, it's filed by Chris Bryce and David Long with Midtown Redevelopment LLC. It's to consolidate lots across six separate sites to construct mixed-use and multifamily dwelling structures, along with associated site and access improvement.
Yes, we have a potential proposal to clarify the lots. Six lots to construct, people dwelling, structures, so it's exciting. Six of the projected sites to develop. Homes, who's essentially the other hand, and then we developed a building, little buildings, seventy units plus eleven individual buildings, approximately ten thousand, and then we have to give them a space. Park will be provided in six accessory lots that have a site, dwellings, one set of the lot, two. So the, I just give kind of a, the property, project is comprised of forty-one separate vehicles, and then a little bit of the area spread out from the street, and off to the north, and the west, to the east.
Harris Street to the south, oh thanks. And Logan Street to the west. The applicants intend to vacate Judd Alley and consolidate the subject parcels into nine separate project sites that will include seven mixed-use slash multifamily buildings with site and access improvements, and four townhomes, two along Logan Street and two along Clinton Street, per the development map in the case report. The Planning Bureau staff recommends that the case, that the application be approved with the following conditions. The applicants will redesign aspects of the project which were changed subsequent to the zoning hearing board approval, including the configuration location of buildings five through seven and the Logan Street townhomes, or will submit, resubmit new zoning relief applications for such changes and receive approval from the ZHP. Those are based on some preliminary drawings that were received by the Planning Bureau. In the interim, the applicants have provided updated documentation on some of those issues, including the removal of a floor at Building Seven, such that much less zoning relief is necessary if the applicants want to move forward with the project as proposed. The applicants will redesign the Logan Street townhomes so that the property at sixteen forty North Fourth Street can be utilized as a public amendment amenity, incorporating a relocated community garden, which the applicants agreed to during the review of Phase One of the Capitol Heights project, which included the removal of the community garden on North Third Street. The applicants should design all of the proposed residential units within the project to be at least visitable, if not fully ADA accessible, including aspects such as zero-step entries for the proposed townhomes, to ensure the units are accessible to as much of the population as possible. The applicants should ensure that the new vehicular access point on Clinton Street features a driveway curb cut design as opposed to the current street curb cut design. The applicants will coordinate with the city engineer's office on new or reconstructed sidewalks and pedestrian markings such as crosswalks. The Plan Bureau recommends that the applicants consider sidewalks the full width of the public right-of-way along Hamilton Street and North Fourth Street specifically. And the applicants will, should, should consider the inclusion of secure ground floor bike storage in the proposed apartment and mixed-use buildings, and will include bicycle racks near the entrance of the commercial spaces in Buildings Two, Three, and Four, as required per Section seven dash three twenty-seven point three E of the zoning code. The Plan Bureau would recommend that such parking be located near the main entrance and sheltered if possible. The applicants will provide formal landscaping and photometric plans to inform discussions with the city arborist, and to confirm consistency with the applicable regulations of the zoning code, such as the fence regulations and the environmental performance standards. The applicants should consider using native tree species and pollinator plants. And finally, the applicants will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size, location, and design of refuse collection, particularly for the multifamily dwellings and mixed-use buildings. Plan Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The applicants have received approval from the zoning hearing board where the various relief requests needed to effectuate the project as previously submitted, and if the Bureau's conditions are adopted, will have met the conditions of those approvals in the subsequent lot consolidation and land development submission. The project will enhance the character of the neighborhood by replacing vacant lots with buildings that reflect the height, massing, and configuration of the surrounding community, and will enhance pedestrian infrastructure throughout the project area. The proposed residential uses, both the townhomes and the apartment buildings, will feature two-bedroom units which are in higher, which are in higher demand than some of the studio or one-bedroom developments that have been more commonplace in recent proposals. And finally, the proposal will add new residents to the neighborhood and activate the street and surrounding community on nights and weekends, and contribute to a growing customer base to support local businesses.
Okay, thank you Jeff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Matt Long with Midtown Redevelopment. Andy Giorgio with One Law, Representative of Developers.
You gentlemen heard the staff report with the conditions. Are you acceptable of those conditions?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, by the way. I don't know if this board, because you've seen this project on many, many occasions, would like a presentation on the project and discussion around the buildings and uses. And certainly, Mr. Long can do that. And then we can talk about the conditions. Look, we can make things easy, I mean, we'll accept the conditions, except what we'd like to talk about with the planning commission, and I learned Jeff to some concerns, and would like his input as well too. So, if you'd like a little presentation first to talk about the project, we can do that, or we can talk about the conditions.
I would say, since even though we have reviewed it many times, but with these specific project, yes, we would like a quick review.
Okay, and we do amend plans, if you'd like me to cast those out.
Are those different from?
There are some minor changes in the plans with respect to, like I said, Building Seven in the original plan set was four stories and sixteen units. This one shows twelve store, twelve units and three stories, and a few other changes here and there with respect to some of the building footprints, but for the most part they're pretty similar. I don't think there's any substantive changes between the two. Oh, and two more, one more change I should note is Buildings Three and Four on those new sets do show the first floor commercial space, which the prior set did not. They just showed it as being six-unit apartment buildings, but they still do have the first floor commercial space.
A quick walkthrough on the project is, these are the vacant lots in Capitol Heights. Every one of these are the vacant lots that's been vacant for some time, and part of developments that were started, failed, started, stopped, failed, repeated over and over about four more times. These are all infill. Three buildings are very much infill spaces that hit corner lots that are approximately thirty to fifty feet wide. They feature first floor commercial space with a few apartments above each. There's adjacent parking to each building, and then there are three larger twelve-unit buildings that span across bigger lots that are about two hundred feet long and about a hundred feet wide. And then there's one eight-unit apartment building that sits on about a hundred and, about a hundred foot wide lot by about seventy feet deep. The LDPs that you have in front of you reflect the zoning that was approved previously and the layouts that were approved previously with one note. On our zoning plans, the language that was listed was to match existing prevailing setback on Buildings Five, Six, and Seven, or D, E, and F. When we received the paperwork from the solicitor, the zoning hearing board solicitor with the order, there was a note after the order on page twenty-two that said, instead of prevailing to match existing prevailing setback, it noted to move them to the front yard line. This is the only condition we have an issue with, because if you're on these lots, Fulton Street is very, so every one of these would be pushing against Fulton Street. It's very narrow, it's only about fourteen feet, the total right-of-way is twenty feet. So it gives you two feet, six inches sidewalk, which isn't legal to begin with. We'd have to have minimum three feet. So we'd already be encroaching six inches onto the land to make a legal sidewalk, which is the intent. What we'd like to do is move the buildings back about four or five feet, because you're going to have a hundred and fif, a hundred and thirty-five foot long building, three feet off the road on a fourteen foot wide road. That's our concern, is you'd have a very narrow law, uh, roadway with a large building directly adjacent to it. And then, our original plan should prevail. The prevailing block, the only instance of this is the existing townhomes on Fulton Street, and they sit back about six feet. And that was our original intent, is to sit back about six feet, so you're not crowding this big building right against the road. And there's ample room on the other side that still maintain plenty of green space facing Rhodes Alley and Meyer Alley.
Well, I mean, as to the zoning hearing board's decision, it is as written, and if it was not challenged by the applicants, that's what the zoning hearing board decision is, and so that's kind of what the applicants need to conform to. Now, their point about the narrow sidewalks, I think is accurate. If you go out there, they're almost certainly not, you know, compliant with the city's standards. I'm kind of confused as to why they were built that way in the first place. But if the applicant's intention is to, you know, provide a wider sidewalk for the general public in front of their buildings, we think that's a reasonable justification for some deviation for that. But if it's just to put a six-yard, a six-foot wide yard in the front, you know, as we noted during the zoning hearing board reviews and the planning commission review of the zoning relief requests, you know, a lot of times these little interstitial spaces become useless spaces. They become, they get walked on, they just become dirt patches, and they're really not contributing either to the streetscape or to the benefit of the tenants of these buildings. Whereas if buildings are moved to the front property line, you create more space behind where they can have, I don't know, patios, you know, fire pit, cornhole, whatever, a place to just go out and, you know, maybe walk your dog or something. So, in the interest of, you know, having a more useful property, I think, and something that I think does better conform to the overall neighborhood, and they're right that the one row of buildings across the street from Site Five with the townhomes is set back, and frankly, I think going out there kind of proves my point, is that some of them are overgrown little lots, and it's because they, those spaces have no utility. And so, I think it would give the overall project more utility, the overall project sites more utility, to have them as close to the front property line as possible. Again, if it, if the intention is- Again, if it, if the intention is to the applicant's point to try and provide a more ADA compliant path along the frontages of these buildings, that, that I think is a good justification. Um, but if it's just to have a couple of bushes that are gonna die out in a year and a half or something, I, I don't think that um, that's frankly, good urban design or would be, would make the projects look better.
Just on, we would be perfectly acceptable making a majority of it sidewalk, but we'd also like to still have some type of vegetation, trees. If you walk around the block, if you're walking up Hamilton or you're walking up Harris, you have tree planters every fifteen to twenty feet. That's the type aesthetic we'd like to keep and we, you know, most of all, we would like to keep the building back so it's not crowding the street and you're not walking down, you're not right against someone's bedroom, you're not right up against the building. Um, so we definitely are not opposed to making it a majority sidewalk with the ability to have tree planters, say, every fifteen feet.
Um. Jeff.
Yeah.
If, if, if that would occur, I believe that would be consistent with the zoning code, right? We wouldn't be in violation of the zoning code with that six foot setback and with additional sidewalk.
Uh, I think the devil's in the details on that. We really have to see exactly what that looks like. I would not feel comfortable giving a response without seeing, you know, something written with dimensions.
Well, but if, if the codes wrote five foot or match existing prevailing setback, which that would do, if we say they're five foot, then we'll match the zoning code directly.
The point being, the zoning hearing board rendered a decision with their decision written out and so the project needs to conform to that. And this was kind of the planning bureau's intent from the get-go last year when we were reviewing this project is not, is again, not to have these small little, you know, three foot by three foot front yards or whatever. It's to have a building that is reflective of buildings literally throughout the city. Um, I don't understand frankly, the concern about crowding the sidewalk when, you know, blocks throughout Midtown, Uptown, Allison Hill have buildings constructed right to the sidewalk. It is what kind of defines urban um, streetscapes and urban spaces is to have this um, is to have buildings fronting these uh, uh, the sidewalk and directly accessible um, to the public right of way.
Yeah, my understanding of the concern though for the developers, Jeff, really is that the size of the sidewalk in there. So um, can we reach an agreement that expanding the sidewalk would be good for ADA purposes um, to create some additional space on the sidewalk for people to move?
Uh, sir, like I said, I think then widening the sidewalks to make them, you know, five foot wide or whatever, however large uh, wide they end up would be a reasonable justification for that, but um, otherwise I would probably say no.
Okay, so if, if, if we, if we agreed to expanding the sidewalk and subject to staff, planning staff review prior to the submission and following the plans, would that be an acceptable condition?
That's up to the planning commission. Uh, if it's for the expansion of the sidewalk, that would be a justification in my opinion.
I'm going to um, go to the commissioners. I have no question at this time and I'll start with Commissioner Oldfield.
Yeah, I have no doubt this time right now.
Commissioner Ray.
These units are mixed income units.
Yes, they are. Uh, the whole overall project has um, we have about fourteen percent low income set aside.
And the townhomes, those will be?
Those, those four townhomes in this packet are lower. There doesn't be two eleven.
Thank you, Dr. Mark.
Uh, Commissioner Mark.
Uh, thank you, yep. I'll start with a easy question. What's the uh, project timeline that we're looking at?
Within a year. Um, and again, I always caution saying this because as personally can tell you right now, we are still, these are all HRA. Um, we just got for the project you heard almost two years ago to the day, uh, our plans are sitting with the codes bureau and they're also sitting with HRA waiting for some revisions to the contract language. And after seventeen months, we've received new parcel ideas. So within a year is the ideal time.
To break ground or complete?
Break ground.
Okay, alright. Yeah. Um, so going back to the conversation about, you know, the, the frontage of the, of the buildings on Fulton Street and setbacks or being right up against, I, do you know, Matt, what the width is of the proposed sidewalk presently? Is it like a foot, less than a foot?
The addition, so.
I can't see a dimension.
If, if you follow what's there now, uh, they're two feet six wide. They're not even up to code. So if you look at our plans, we, you see, see about six inches on there. That's to get them to legal width right there. I mean, these are, they weren't built to code.
Yeah.
And they weren't built like anything else in the city. I mean, you don't have anywhere that you have a two foot six wide sidewalk. And the right of way is twenty feet, got a fourteen foot wide road, so.
Right, so the side, that bit of sidewalks in the ri- has to be in the right of way of the road because it's so, yeah.
Yep.
So that's not even ADA compliant.
Correct.
At the current dimension.
Nope.
But yet, one of the conditions is asking for.
ADA compliance.
ADA compliance and visibility at the highest extent possible. So we're sort of, sort of like double, like, like, it's a little bit hypocrite. We're, we're kind of going double edged sword here, asking for one condition, but then not really allowing for the other condition to be fulfilled. It's a little contradictory of what we really want here.
Yeah, and I, and I, like I said, I agree that widening the sidewalks is a, is a reasonable justification.
Yeah.
Would just like, if, if it was just to have the setback with a yard in front, for example, I would think that that would not be, you know, a reasonable justification.
Right. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking about the ADA compliance accessibility, the desire to allow for a greater visitability of access of the sites, also the vision zero city plan of pedestrian priority and safety. Um, so, so that's sort of some things I'm thinking about. I, going back and then the planner thought, um, would it be a possibility and a consideration to sit down with Claire at CRW to discuss um, incorporating some of those tree wells and uh, s- the smaller storm, like uh, rain basin, you know, rain capture.
Yep.
Areas? You could incorporate some of those if you went to a six foot plus sidewalk width.
Yep.
Um, it also might help with some of your stormwater management requirements on the sites. Some food for thought for my commissioners. Is the condition one all focused around this chain? That was, is.
Yeah.
Are there other, I, the condition one was a little vague to me and that might just be because I don't remember.
Right.
All the back and forth.
Well, like I said, it was uh, related to like the Logan Street townhomes were set back um, and those in the initial design and zoning review were set against the front yard. There was the additional building on um, additional floor on building seven. Uh, and some of these are being corrected in the um, revised plans, but uh, additionally, when the zoning hearing board does render a decision, if a plan is designed to not be in conformance with those um, conditions of approval, they're, uh, the applicants have to go back before. This actually happened, it's, it doesn't happen often, uh, but it did actually happen with the Mulder Square project where they moved some of the units from one of the sites into another building.
Yeah.
And the applicants had to go back to the zoning hearing board and get relief from the condition the zoning hearing board uh, applied in that situation. So that's why we'd want to make sure that the project is going forward in conformance with the zoning hearing board decision.
Sure, understood.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Um, my last question is around condition two. What is the intent of, of the planning bureau about redesigning that so that it utilizes a public amenity?
So that was, as, as noted in the condition there, that was brought up uh, during the discussion on uh, phase one, uh, which was um, the block along between Third Street and Logan Street. And if the commissioners may remember, there was a bit of a consternation uh, from some members of the public about the loss of the community garden there along Third Street. And uh, I mean, you might not remember that, it was a while ago and I think the garden itself has fallen into some disrepair since then, probably due to the kind of uncertain nature of where everything stood there. But um, as a um, uh, as a offset, uh, the applicants um, had noted, and I believe it actually ended up in some sketch site plan, uh, that they would be having the community garden on the block to the east. In fact, I looked it up um, while doing this case report and I believe Commissioner Merrick, you had asked about that and they had said, you know, we will provide this garden um, to the east and I believe it was meant to be a continuation of a brick sidewalk that went through the uh, block of phase one and then through this site, through this uh, block here alongside the Logan Street townhomes.
If I can real quick on that, um, the size of the townhomes have been increased a little bit.
Which page are you on?
So CHPR dash one.
CHPR dash one, thank you.
So the community garden is still gonna be there. Um, and we will update the plans to show access to it, but it will be at the, the sub, where you see site Logan slash Clinton.
Yeah, that's where, okay.
That, so what we'll do uh, before submission and we'll make, you know, send to the planning bureau is we'll throw a hatch pattern on there and show this area is dedicated to community garden. If you look directly above that, there's actually an existing right of way there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and there's a pathway, you'll, you'll see it even indicated uh, to your left. There's an existing walkway there that abuts the property, so still have a right of way access. Um, and then we will show the portion beyond the townhouse lot as dedicated to communal space, community garden space.
Okay.
So there'll still be access, um, we might put a note on there that the portion of access within uh, our plan will be updated and upgraded for easier ease of access. Jeff.
What's that? Yeah. If it, well, if the intention is to expand that site over to North Fourth Street so that it's accessible to the public and visible to the public, I think maybe that'd be okay, but to just put a little island in the center of the, of the block that's really only accessible via the parking lot and by a, a maybe four foot wide uh, grocer's alley that runs behind buildings, like that to me does not say welcome community, it does not say this is a community space. It says, you know, this is a space that's really off limits to people and um, you know, I don't think that was the intention uh, of the planning bureau to accept what they're proposing now, um, when we discussed this a year ago. Uh, and you know, the, I'm not sure why the townhouses just had to be widened all of a sudden. The ones along um, uh, Clinton Street seem to be about the same size as the lots that are along Logan Street. They've just widened the houses. Uh, and again, post discussion of this with the commissioners and, and with, you know, planning bureau staff and uh, you know, I, I just think the applicant should be following through on the commitments they've made in previous discussions of this project and phase one of the project. Um, again, maybe it doesn't have to look quite the same as using the whole block or the whole property of sixteen forty North Fourth Street for public right of way, but you know, that was definitely the uh, discussion point at the last meeting and um, to change that then after the fact, after getting approvals is, you know, not something that I think is a good look, um, when we're changing the design to something that was previously agreed upon.
The applicant has no issue dedicating four feet, four feet space to the north to wider access. Which would match the original.
Well, I can't chime in about that commentary, it's between those two.
I mean, we, we have no objection to dedicating those four feet back.
So it would be an eight foot wide?
So you, you have seven feet right now between the two, but giving up the three foot setback. Kind of think the constructability on it. This one, the house doesn't actually encroach the whole way, so we have room to run on the side. This one, they're actually built right onto the property. But I wouldn't want to give up the three feet there for constructability, but giving this four feet as a dedicated path or an easement. Which would match the original plan of the wide walkway.
I mean, I'd really have to see a um, a site plan of what this is as opposed to a conceptual discussion um, for me to say whether the planning bureau felt that this met the intent of the discussion at previous meetings.
Can we ask the practical question? You're kind of negotiating sitting here at the table with something that's not in front of the board, so what are you asking the board to do?
Well, we just received these on the board.
Right, I'm not asking, what are you asking the board to do? Because how do they go on something that's not in front of them?
That's the only question, whether they feel should be conditioned.
So you're asking the board to add conditions you're proposing tonight? I'm just trying to get clarity of what the board's gonna be asking. Well, I think, I think um, there are eight conditions uh, that came along with the recommendation from the city. I think we're asking that those conditions, this board consider amending those consistent with the discussion tonight.
So, so they're very detailed what you're saying.
Yeah.
And so just the clarity of everybody, it has to be very detailed how this gets in front of the board.
Yeah, and I think that along with that, I would say, Neil, um, because I think Jeff raises a good point, that certainly if the language isn't perfected tonight, but it comes with a, the plans have to be submitted to planning staff for approval on the, on meeting the conditions being discussed tonight. Because I know, for instance, Jeff raises concern with, look, you're asking me to say, what's the sidewalk gonna look like when it's six foot and I don't have a plan in front of me. I want to see what it looks like, where the planners are and, you know, I think that's, that's reason where Matt's saying, look, I'll reverse the plans back and, you know, provide some sort of easement right of way if that's submitted to planning staff review, I think that'd be an acceptable condition.
Yeah, I'm, I was just trying to get clarification, record we're trying to create tonight.
Yeah.
So, and I'll leave it to Mr. Knight then. Please.
At the end of the day, I guess my concern is why this plan does not look like what was reviewed and approved at the zoning hearing board. I don't understand why certain changes are made. Like that's, the whole point is to say, here's what I'm gonna do, here's a zoning relief, I need to get to do that, and then here's land development plan to effectuate what I said I was going to do. And now we're getting changes between what that zoning relief is and now, and you know, I, there, without seemingly justification, there seems to be just, well, we decided to make the buildings wider or we just decided to change this community space. We said, we told people where it's going to be here. And that is my concern is that this is done kind of really like, I don't understand why these things are being made when the whole point of the process as we go through it is to say, this is what I'm doing, here's the legal uh, here's the legal uh, permissions that I need from the zoning hearing board, and then here is the land development plan that again, accomplishes what we all talked about during the zoning relief process. And then there's these changes between, and if those, if that wasn't what they intended to build, they should not have brought that before the board is my concern because now it's just, oh, we have to do it this way and it's different than what we said before.
So Jeff, you're saying that we vote on your report with the conditions and they're acceptable of those. That's not changing the plans, right?
Yeah, and I, and I think there is some wiggle room here given the conditions. It says, you know, they'll use sixteen ten North Fourth Street uh, for um, the, for the community space in the garden and you can do that without having to use that whole property and still meet that, but if it's just, hey, we'll give you this four foot of space between these two fences here that the community can walk down to get to this garden, to me, that's not a community amenity. That's not what uh, the intent of that discussion was at the previous meeting. That's not what the intent of that discussion was at the previous meeting.
I guess I would raise the issue then, Jeff, is it, is it not consistent with the code? And I, I think about both of these issues. I mean, a plan may have been presented to the zoning hearing board for the purposes of relief. But if a subsequent plan is consistent with the code, regardless of what relief was granted by the zoning hearing board, why does that matter? So for example, if you have a non-compliant, not ADA accessible sidewalk, you wanted to go back off of the street further, which you're permitted to do, and these were zoned. And your proposal is to expand the sidewalk, and that's consistent with the zoning code. You don't need zoning relief, so even though the zoning hearing board may have conditioned something.
And we may, but that's the thing, we may. You're, you're bringing these things up now when it's like, okay, we're, what if we do something different? And I said, I said, maybe that's something we can work through. But again, I've asked for drawings I don't have. You're asking me to say yes to things that I can't see.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I said, I think the proposed, the proposal then from us would be, there's a list of conditions. We'd like to meet with those conditions in a different way. And we're fine if the condition is that there have to be plans submitted to you, planning staff. That's part of the approval tonight. We would accept. That is the condition.
Again, I, if, if they want to, if the board wants to say, we are fine with adopting these with that condition, that the plan will meet Planning Bureau approval, I guess it sounds like you're asking. Then if I say, well, I don't like this, are you going to say, you know, well, we can do it anyway because what you asked for is not in the, is not like specified in the zoning code?
So again, you know.
Man, real quick, we're, we're going onto a long, drawn-out conversation here. And what I'd like to go back to is, we had two items. We're talking of the community garden, and we're talking about the sidewalks. The proposal that we're asking for tonight is very clear and doesn't deviate from the zoning plans. It deviates on language that was adopted in the order that's open for interpretation. There illustrated in front of you is the setback that we're requesting. Jeff is saying it would be acceptable if it was presented as concrete, as a sidewalk. That is our proposal. It's that. That's where we're at. It'd be proposed as concrete. There, there's nothing more. And then on the community garden, I will note that the community garden was never in the zoning for this phase. It was in the zoning for a prior phase. It was not in the zoning for what is approved and what is fronting. What is depicted in front of you in these drawings matches the two-sixths of twenty-three drawings that were submitted and approved by the zoning hearing board and this planning commission last year. It would still allow for the community garden. And we are willing to take the additional space that is not required for the homes and dedicate that. We have two things, change the concrete and add the additional space to make it more welcoming as you walk down to the community garden.
I, I would argue that the plans here do not match what was shown to the zoning hearing board. If they did, it would have been brought up at the former meeting. They, and the applicants admitted, they, they changed the configuration of the, of the row, of the Logan Street row homes. I'm just, I'm just asking people to be consistent when they come before the boards and say, here is what I'm going to do. If they, if they then follow up and do not do that, then, you know, that is, that creates a problem for me. That creates a problem because they've sat in front of the board and in front of the public and said, we're willing to do this. And especially in regards to the public's concerns about the loss of the community garden. Say, we hear you, we're going to do this for you. And now later they come back and say, we're not going to do it that way. And to me, that's a, that's a concern. That is a concern to me.
And I, I don't know if it's a question per se, but in the spirit of, yeah, continuing to try to refocus and narrow down, I just wanted to share that it did sound to me earlier, having to do with the setbacks and the sidewalks, that a wider sidewalk, which I think everyone agrees is a good idea, could be a justification for that, I guess, slight change to condition number two. Does that sound?
And I'm not saying, and when I said that, I'm not saying I would approve it. Because again, I have to do this in conformance with the zoning, very important thing. So I, I was not, if, if it came across as, as I was saying, like, yeah, I'd sign off if you changed this because I like the thing you're doing, like, that was not my implication, that's not my intention.
I, I appreciate that, and I'm not trying to pass the buck on that. I guess I would share my view that I think I would elevate the concern about getting those sidewalk width up to the legal standard and hopefully a little bit, you know, to be the elevating, the elevated concern in my mind. So I would view that as a justification for the, the piece of that that we were talking about first. I, I know that we were talking about a second thing as well, but I guess I would share that with the commission at this point and maybe defer to others who were around for the first, first round on the community garden piece of it. I know it's not a question, but I wanted to put it in the room.
Go around with the commissioners after we heard more discussions. I mentioned, until we have anything, my commission room. Yeah, Commissioner Mark. Okay, I'm, I'm still trying to clarify with you, Jeff.
Uh-huh.
If you're, if you're, I'm interpreting that if we approve the project with your conditions, then you're saying they are in compliance with what was the zoning hearing board?
That would be correct. I mean, that's basically what the condition says, is you will be in compliance with the zoning hearing board decision.
I'll go to the public first and then come back to the commissioners. Is there anyone in the middle who are against this project? Do you want to write?
Hi, I just, I'm sorry. I, my concern is that, are we deciding that the changes made here are minor in nature or adjustments or correction? Because if not, and if not, if it's not going to match exactly what the zoning hearing board said, then changes to approved plans need to go back to the zoning hearing board. So I'm trying to figure out if, if Jeff, you are making decision that if it's not required, it's because it's from minor technical adjustments or corrections of information that do not affect the significant features of the site plan and the intensity of use as determined by the zoning officer. So are you telling them that if you accept the conditions that you're saying or leeway that you're saying, are they sticking to the zoning hearing board's decision? Or are they making changes that should be sent back to the zoning hearing board?
If the conditions as outlined in the case report are adopted, it would be in conformance with the zoning hearing board decision.
I mean, even with, I hear you saying like, well, there could be some leeway, like, I'm not sure.
No, I'm saying that might be a justification for moving the building back, but that's not saying like, I'm authorizing you to do that. And there could even be, there could even be.
Moving the building back a minor technical issue? Or is that, how, I think there needs to be legal interpretation of, you know what I'm saying? Like, if you're saying if he could move the building back, are you saying that that would be a minor technical adjustment or correction from what zoning hearing said?
I don't know what minor technical adjustment, I mean, those are.
I, I don't even think that's the issue. I, I, I think that.
I'm saying I think the issue is that if you're not approving what the zoning hearing board already approved, then it's problematic.
And I, I disagree because the zoning hearing board didn't approve land development plans. That's not their job. What their job is to grant relief. And the issue that we're discussing doesn't go to us asking, our client asking for relief under the zoning hearing code. What I'm saying is that, and I indicated this earlier, the plans that we're submitting, which have the additional sidewalk, are consistent with the zoning. We don't need relief in order to submit those plans to Jeff and say to Jeff, we'd like to have a bigger sidewalk and build a bigger sidewalk. This is consistent with the code. Will staff approve the plans? It's not a zoning hearing board issue without the law.
I'm saying, I'm saying changes to an approved plan.
The dimensions match, exactly. The dimensions match exactly what was committed for the zoning hearing board to the team. I just looked it up. It's forty-four feet rear yard setback. We have forty-four feet. And, and it showed a five-foot, but it said to match prevailing, which would be, if you go by matching prevailing, would be the six-foot setback already established.
I think there may be, with respect to the sidewalks, maybe some, to your point about being a minor technical issue. If the space there in the setback was used for a sidewalk, that would be considered development still. If somebody does a parking lot and they build it to the, to the property lines, we consider that a development that encroaches into a setback. So that would still be considered development. Would it be the building development? You know, no, but it would be a development footprint of the building. Like, there, I think you could make an argument that that's a technical issue in that case. You know, if, if we're trying, if we're trying to look for like whether this conforms to like the zoning code and/or conforms to the zoning hearing board decision and saying like, well, if you're moving that back, then you're not conforming to the zoning hearing board decision. That's still a development encroachment into the footback, into the setback. It's still development up to the property line. It's just used for a sidewalk instead of the building. So I think in that spirit of what Ms. Cameron is saying, that could be considered a minor technical alteration.
Commissioners, is any other comments? But at this time, I'd like to get a motion to approve the project with the conditions. Your motion. If not, I need a motion. Another motion.
I would make a motion to approve with the conditions amending condition one. To, I'm trying to think how to word this, to state how, to state that buildings five through seven and the Logan Street Townhomes will be in zoning code conformance. I think that would address what we're discussing about this.
Is there a second?
Yeah, the second. With, with, with the, well, I don't need to make a notation, but with the understanding that that.
To be approved by the, reviewed by the, the Planning Bureau, Bureau. I should add that statement as well to condition one.
Seconded.
The second for approval with the amended condition one.
Yeah.
All those in favor, state by state, higher.
I.
Opposed, abstained, noted. Okay, we're going to item number two then. Item number two is by consolidation and land development plan application for Marketplace Midtown, which is Zone RM. It's followed by Chris Bryce and David Long with Midtown Redevelopment LLC. And it's to consolidate lots across seven separate sites to construct mixed-use, commercial and multifamily dwelling structures, along with associated sites and access improvements.
Uh, yes, so the applicants are proposing to consolidate lots across seven separate sites to construct mixed-use, commercial and multifamily dwelling structures along with associated site and access improvements. Three of the project sites will be developed as row homes. Three will be developed as multifamily dwellings. One of the sites will be a mixed-use building. One of the sites will be a food hall. And three will be developed as accessory parking for the proposed residential and commercial buildings. The six space, eight space and forty-three space parking lots. In total, there will be sixty-two units across twenty-three individual buildings and approximately fifty-five hundred square feet of commercial space. Similar to the last one, I'll just read the general property description as opposed to the description of each individual site. The project is comprised of fifty-one separate vacant parcels. The applicant, the applicants intend to both consolidate and subdivide the subject parcels into eleven separate project sites that will include mixed-use, multifamily buildings with site improvements, townhomes and a food hall, per the attached development map. The planning bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant should design all of the proposed residential units within the project to be at least visitable, if not fully ADA, ADA accessible, including aspects such as zero-step entries for the proposed townhomes to ensure the units are accessible to as much of the population as possible. The applicants should ensure that all new vehicular access points feature a driveway curb cut design as opposed to a street, as opposed to a street curb cut design. The applicants will coordinate with the city engineer's office on new or reconstructed sidewalks and pedestrian markings such as crosswalks. Planning Bureau recommends that the applicants specifically consider full-width sidewalks on the public right-of-way along Calder Street and North Fourth Street. The applicant should consider the inclusion of secure ground floor bike storage in the proposed apartment and mixed-use buildings, and will include bicycle racks near the entrances of the commercial components of the project as required by section seven dash three twenty-seven point three E of the zoning code. Planning Bureau would recommend that such parking be located near the main entrance and sheltered if possible. The applicants will provide formal landscaping and photometric plans to inform discussions with the city arborist and to inform consistency with the applicable requirements of the zoning code, such as the fence regulations and the environmental performance standards. And finally, the applicants will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size, location and design of refuse collection, particularly for the multifamily dwellings and mixed-use buildings. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The applicants have received approval from the zoning hearing board for the various relief requests needed to effectuate the project as proposed and has met the conditions of those approvals in the subsequent law consolidation and land development submission. The project will enhance the character of the neighborhood by replacing vacant lots with buildings that reflect the height, massing and configuration of the surrounding community and with commercial space tailored to small businesses similar to those along North Third Street. And will enhance pedestrian infrastructure throughout the project area. The proposed residential uses, both the townhomes and apartment buildings, will feature two-bedroom units, which are in higher demand than some of the studio one-bedroom developments that have been more commonplace in recent proposals. And finally, the proposal will add new residents to the neighborhood and activate the street and surrounding community on nights and weekends and contribute to a growing customer base to support local businesses.
Thank you, Jeff. Gentlemen, you heard the staff report. Are you acceptable to those conditions?
Yes.
Commissioners, I have no questions. If you have any concerns or questions, then let's start with Commissioner O'Toole.
I have none.
Commissioner Reed?
None.
Commissioner Merrick?
Just one similar question to before. What is the project timeline on this proposal?
The same. The goal on this one actually is very aggressive. We hope if approved and afforded, to break ground on parking, the main parking lot and the market building. in the town as soon as possible, ideally, we've been talking March or April. Hope to get the marketplace building done before market.
Ah. Good call. Think that may be likely. At this, at the rate the city's going. Uh, I have no other questions.
Okay.
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public for against this project? It's stuck middle. To my right. Could you state your name and address?
Uh, my name's Dylan Ziegler. My address is fourteen twenty-two Fulton Street. I think this project is surrounding the area. Um, is there green space left in any of these areas? Is that proposed in the project? Because I live in this area. Um, most of the lots that I think, because I couldn't get any information as to exactly which lots are in this area, those lots are used by families in this area. Um, it's not quite the same. Those lots don't look the same as the ones that are up farther north on Fourth Street, that your other project that you're doing. Um, these lots are kept really nice, there are families that play in those yards, um, in those empty lots, specifically the ones that have grass, um, specifically the one that's next to the church on Marion Street. So I just want to know if there is any green space left, because now we're turning all this green space into parking lots.
Um, so these are all infill lots. Uh, have you had a chance to look at the plans directly?
I have not had any.
Okay. Yep, and I will absolutely give you a set here. Um, so a lot of these lots, so like, where we're proposing right now, um, so you, you said fourteen twenty-two? So that, that's right at the corner before the green lot that sits on Riley, correct? Okay, so that lot's not in the proposal right now, just saying, that, that's a few. Yep, um, so the, uh, most of these townhomes, so there's, say, I believe we're consolidating one, two, three, four, five, six. So, in an area we're looking to build, uh, seven townhomes, or six townhomes, there were seven lots previously. Per the planning bureau, the recommendation, we're holding up as close to the road as possible. Now, these houses are all gonna have little yards in the back. Um, the apartment buildings will have, on one of them will have green space out back. So if you're going up, uh, Calder, the one on Marion, there'll be probably, to give you an idea, twenty foot, that opens up to about twenty-six feet by a hundred plus feet, will still be green.
That would be designated to that apartment.
Correct, yeah, yeah. This is all infill, I mean, they're, they're, you said they're smaller lots, we're doing them best we can, without, was trying not to take up every spot.
There is, if you look, there is no actual public park in that neighborhood. The only public space in that neighborhood. The next closest park, way. Wondering, there was the community garden also there as well, in the corner of Marion and Calder Street. So now we're looking at other spaces, except for the Riley, there is gonna be that space on Riley. But that also, that Riley Street is very dangerous. That is not, I mean, people riding down that street like crazy. So, as someone with a small child, I would not, my child would take that area. That Riley Street.
Yeah.
So, people use specifically Calder Street, because that is way less traffic. They've got nice shade trees, winding backstreet, they use those specific paths.
One second, because I just wanna. We might have to talk, yeah, afterwards, because there is a lot, uh, right on the corner of Marion and Calder, that it's really, nothing could be built there.
Right, I know there's a lot.
And, yeah, and kind of meeting with you and some residents in the HOA there even too, uh, to discuss plans for, this, that could be a very good use for it. And that's, that's like, oh, let's wait and then kind of discuss some.
Okay. Thanks for your question. And I would kind of recommend you two getting together, but it seems like you're sort of in agreement. Okay, commissioners, any other questions or concerns? If not, could I get a motion?
Motion to approve conditions.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
It's been moved, a second for approval of this project, uh, with the conditions. All those in favor, state by state, aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff? Jeff, you have, sorry, meeting's not over yet. You have any other, any other business?
Uh, there is no other business, no.
Commissioners, could you guys, sorry? Gentlemen, meeting's not over yet.
Sorry.
Is there anything good, what are the good, what are the worst? Not, could I get a motion for, for gentlemen?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand here.